Good evening. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States. I am an American, and I am a patriot of the Constitution of America.
Roll call. All eight of us are here. And let's, two things. We're going to do a public comment and then we're going to go out of order on the agenda and do our action items first before we do the budget presentations. So, does anybody have any public comments? Going once? Okay. Executive session announcements. There was an executive session held prior to this evening's meeting to discuss Teamsters negotiations. And now, we're going to the report of the superintendent, but we're going to fast forward to the action items.
Thank you, Mr. Rubinowitz. Asking that you are recommending that you approve all personnel items as submitted.
Got a motion in a second. Are there any comments or questions? I had a question. Was the retirement here expected?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries eight, nothing.
I recommend that you authorize the administration to approve the special education plan as submitted and submit to the Department of Education.
Motion in a second. Are there any questions?
Will the grammatical errors corrected?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries eight, nothing.
I recommend that you approve the conference attendance as presented, and there's an A, and a 2A, and a 1A. We had to add one. The second one, just for your reference, was in your folder this evening, and there was a news and notes that went along with that. And just to let you know, we received word today, or yesterday, that we are receiving our Health and Wellness Grant. We had to reallocate some funds because we didn't expend the funds in the way that they were earmarked. So, we got together a few weeks ago and we looked at really where our needs are with the funds that are remaining in that Health and Wellness Grant. And based on the fact that we have some students who are really high need and are difficult sometimes for our staff because of their behaviors, we wanted to do some further training with staff to be able to appropriately intervene with those students. And this is a really nice education forum for those teachers to be able to then apply those learnings with the students that we have that are coming back from outside placements and sometimes just have some behavioral and emotional needs that, you know, that we're not accustomed to addressing, which is really the impetus behind asking for the reallocation of funds. The Health and Wellness Foundation authorized that transfer. They thought it was a really good use of our money. So, we're now asking for approval so that they can go ahead on this training in May.
All right. Since they're separate, can I have a motion for 1A? Motion in a second. Are there any questions?
Again, I support the training.
Just a quick question. I support the training, but I believe we can send one person and have them train additional staff. So, only for that reason I'll be voting no, but I do support the training.
My question was just, obviously, this is coming from the Health and Wellness Grant.
We're on the other one right now. 1A. 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 There's 2A and a 1A, sorry. Okay?
All right. So, we have a motion. Any other? And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Motion carries seven, one. Now, we're on 2A. Al, can I have a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second.
In a sec. I'm sorry. In a second?
I see.
Oh, sorry, Rick.
Any?
Al?
Just a question on the Health and Wellness Grant. As in, I understand we're spending this money from that. Is there other means that we could spend this money as well? If we're, I mean, it looks like we're just trying to say, hey, we have six grants, so let's just use it.
No, that really wasn't how this came up. We sat as a team, a cabinet team, and we took a look at what our needs were, and this was on need for us. We really felt strongly about having these teachers trained. We did expend some money in some other ways. Off the top of my head, I'll try to remember, we reallocated some funds to get some additional growing gardens at the K-2 elementary schools because one of their science projects they're working on, trying to do a grow garden, and we were able to purchase one and piloted at Ringing Rocks, and the teachers really loved it. So, we decided we're going to add some of those because that fell under Health and Wellness. They only, there's certain things that we have to make sure they fall on a particular category, and we really felt that this was something that would be valuable to our staff.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
I had a question, sir. Thank you. Just to confirm, this program is going to be replacing any current programs, correct? Thank you.
All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries eight, nothing. Mrs. Cherico has something to share in reference to the Education Foundation?
Hi, everyone. Mr. D'Renzo shared this with me right before the meeting started, and this was one of his brainchild ideas that we spoke of, oh, gosh, maybe a year or so ago when we knew that the renovation was going forward. This is a board from the, one of the bleachers from our old gym, and Gary had said there were other schools that cut pieces of board, and then this, I don't know if the camera can hone in on this, but it says Potts Grove High School Gymnasium, home of the Falcons, 1956 to 2016, original bleacher. So, we are going to have these available for purchase for alumni, parents, doting parents as I will be, to purchase these for my two daughters who played basketball, and I spent many, many, many hours sitting on these bleachers. But the proceeds from the sale of these is going to benefit the Education Foundation. So, we'll have the kickoff at the Foundation 5K, which will be on Friday, May 13th, starting at 7:00, I believe it is. And there's information about that on the website, and there's going to be additional information about these on the website, too.
Diane, could you just remind everybody what the Education Foundation, who benefits from the proceeds?
Many-fold benefits. We're trying to kind of grow the foundation at this point. Years ago, we had begun mini-grants for the teachers that they could apply for so that we would be able to supplement some of the ideas that they had for their, to grow their classes, and might not have been able to implement those under budget constraints that we had here. So, like I said, we're trying to grow the foundation a little bit to have additional funding for education purposes so that we don't hit the taxpayers all the time.
Just to add to Diane's comments, she's covered well the function, so the lawyer can't help himself, but for those of the public and in the viewing audience, this, the reason why this foundation's created, as many educational institutions do, is because you have registered as a 501(c)(3), which is a reference to the tax code. And the important item is that the donations that you make are in fact tax deductible. That's, you know, people may be asking, how's this separate from the school district? It's probably been 15, 20 years now that we created the foundation, and the part of the purpose was, well, the purpose was to raise funds, as Diane suggested, but the reason we went to the legal fiction of creating a foundation was that it is tax-exempt, your donations. So, everybody give money. Carrie, I'm going to buy a bleacher. I figure I've been here, not since '56. People won't believe that, but I have been here for a while.
Can I make one more pitch? If you go onto the school district website and click the Amazon button, a portion, a very small portion, but a portion nonetheless, of your purchase goes to the Potts Grove Education Foundation as long as you access Amazon through that link.
I did not know that, so thank you. In my house, there are a lot of Amazon purchases, so we'll do our part henceforward.
Moving on to discussion items. We said that we were going to devote this evening to our budget discussions, and I'd like to start off with, Dave's just going to give us a little bit of background and set the context. Each director will present their budget, and we can take questions intermittent after each presentation. And as I indicated earlier this afternoon, I posted a link to their budget information on the website. So, for members of the audience, if you were to go on our website, under the Business Department, under Budget, you can see all of the links to each one of the presentations this evening that they'll be speaking about. We're not going to use a PowerPoint because it was just too much. It wouldn't, it really wouldn't project, but you can certainly go on and take a look at that there. So, that being said, we'll turn it over to Mr. Nester for a brief introduction.
Thank you, Ms. Fiola, and I hope everybody's as excited to talk about this as I am. This is, doesn't get much better. This is like Christmas. Actually, just want to give you some, a refresher on where we are, where we started, and then give you an update on where we are and where we think we'll be as we go through this process. If you think back to my initial budget presentation, I indicated to you that it was probably the most positive budget presentation I've made in my 15 years here at Potts Grove School District with a preliminary budget need of about a 2% tax increase, which is below the Act 1 index of 2.4, the base Act 1 index. At that point in time, there was a request made to look at ways to reduce that 2% to either 1 or 0, and what it would, what it might take. But I also discussed at that point in time the fact that the budget impasse that was in effect at the state level at that point in time really made it difficult to project how much we were going to get for the current fiscal year, not much less than what they might give us in next fiscal year. So, over the last several months, we've gotten a lot of clarity, still not 100% clarity, on a number of items. Probably the best news we could have gotten is that the legislature and the governor agreed to add an additional $50 million in funding for basic education across the state. And the governor has now agreed, or agreed not to veto, the fiscal code bill, which ends up allocating more revenue to suburban school districts than the governor's plan did. His plan had the impact of helping some of the most distressed school districts in the state, but did not provide as much funding to districts like ours and the surrounding communities. So, we have an idea of where it's going. We haven't seen final numbers from PDE yet, so I'm waiting for that before we make the, make any changes to the budget. But we're anticipating that to generate about an additional $200,000 in the current year over what we had included in our budget. Much, much more than we anticipated, and much more than we would have thought a month ago when we received the information. So, that's the first good piece of, piece of good news.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt you, but while it's fresh in my mind, my recollection from the budgeting process last year is that we anticipated about $100,000 extra from the state.
Correct.
So, we're plus 100 for the current year.
No, we're plus 200.
Oh, so.
It's beyond that.
So, it's 200, more than the 100 that we anticipated?
Yes.
That is great news.
It is.
And we would presume that we'll at least be level for the following
Correct.
year. So, even if we are, that's better than our preliminary budget.
Correct.
Excellent. Thank you.
In addition to that, over the last month or so, we've been screening through the budget and speaking with all the budget managers, which will hear tonight, to look at areas that can be trimmed without impacting, negatively impacting any of our programs. And through, through hard work and just review and review and review, we have found a number of items which I'll present to you afterwards. What the presenters are going to present tonight is what was incorporated in their original budget, okay? These are things that the departments feel they need to operate their program at its current level of proficiency. I want you to keep your positive attitude as you go through this because, as I'm looking at things today, I think we can achieve or get very close to achieving the goals set forth at previous meetings and possibly get to that elusive 0% tax increase. So, hold on to your hats. I never thought I'd say that again. So.
I'm having a heart attack.
Don't. We'll talk about some things. There are a lot of volatile, significant changes that can make day to day. We just had one today, but it's very positive. I think we can get close. I don't know if we can get there, but I think we can get close. So, with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. D'Renzo to talk about athletics, and then at the end, we'll do a more detailed wrap-up on items that are in the budget or can be cut from the budget.
Just a question for clarification. You said you went through the departments, and there was cutbacks, but you said, now this budget is the original budget, you said. So, is this after what things that have been kind of reviewed, or this is prior to administration?
This is, for the most part, this is prior. With one exception, I think Mr. Wagman's numbers reflect his budget cuts. Your overview, Will.
What you have with that is prior.
So, the bottom line is there, we'll talk about what the cuts are later, and then, you know, we'll tell you what's, what's in the budget and what's not in the budget at that point in time. Okay?
Good evening. Thank you. I believe everybody has a review sheet, and some of our items were discussed at the Athletic Committee meeting, but the five-year goals for the Athletic Department have been laid out, and they are, review and update all supplemental job descriptions. Number two is implement new co-curricular programs that support the mission of the Potts Grove School District. Number three, review facility rental practices, procedures, and additional marketing of our facilities. Number four is to establish a Potts Grove Athletic Hall of Fame. Number five is to implement a girls volleyball and bowling programs in 2017. And number six is to continue to generate and seek sponsorships in conjunction with Market Street Sports for additional revenue, community partnerships. Below that is a five-year budget comparison of the athletic budget's historic perspective, and I'll just go through each of the, my, really primarily, my budget is basically about six domains that incorporate just about everything that we do. The first is the 300, and that's professional services. And that, those dollars provide for all the security at our co-curricular activities, all of our middle school dances, our prom, our fall ball, and obviously, all of our athletic events, graduation, et cetera. We outsource some, our community, or our security group that helps us with security at each of our events and different venues throughout the district. Also in that account is our, the mandatory coaches' education. That is, has been set out by the National Federation of High Schools, the fundamentals of coaching, and the first aid, health, and safety program, and we are underway on those in the spring that we will start certifying all of our coaches. We have a two-year window that we can do that for all 76 coaches. The 400 account is the reconditioning and repair, and basically what that is, is that allows us to extend our equipment, a lot of our hard equipment, I'll call hard equipment, such as helmets, shoulder pads, things of that such that are not really disposable, but they are all based on safety of our student athletes. We recondition them every year. That means we take them to an approved, approved vendor that makes sure all the safety checks, et cetera, are taken care of, they're clean, sanitized. If they need mending, they are mended, et cetera, and then they're certified for an additional year through the NOXY certification program as well as through the PIA. Also in that budget code, that line item is our rentals for the YMCA for our swim program, as well as our rental at Blackwood Golf Course for the golf program. Included in that, in those, that line item is our rental of the porta-potties at different satellites. We have porta-potties at Hollenbach Field. We utilize that in conjunction with Upper Potts Grove Township, Lower Potts Grove, so we don't have our student athletes or spectators going into an elementary school. And sometimes we have them at the middle school, but I know that the football program has helped with that, the youth program has helped with that as well. It also calibrates all of our scales for our wrestling program. We need, again, a lot of our, a lot of our items that we have to certify each year, we have to calibrate those scales, and then the repair of any scoreboards or headsets that we utilize, that comes out of that, that account code. The 500 code, which is supplies and athletic, and that's really the largest, the largest item that I have, and that's really all of our, all of our equipment for grade 7 through 12, all of our sports, et cetera, all of our computer software that we utilize in our district for scheduling, for injury tracking, as well as the impact program that we utilize for concussion management, and all of our athletic communications, our cell phones, et cetera, travel for postseason competition. If we get into postseason, we need to make provisions for our kids to stay at different venues that are overnight, et cetera. All of our equipment and uniforms, our medical supplies, that all comes out of that, that account. Our 700 code is the replacement of different field equipment, such as soccer goals, lacrosse goals, basketball goals, pitching screens, tennis nets, et cetera. Again, items that we use year after year, but we also need to replace as well. And our, my last item in the 800 column is all of our dues and fees. We have, we're a member, we're a member school of the Pennsylvania Interscholastic Athletic Association, which means we're a member for the high school, for the middle school, as well as District 1. So, all these are fixed costs. Pioneer Athletic Conference, all of these are league costs, et cetera. All of our entry fees, if we enter teams into tournaments, invitationals, et cetera, they are included out of that, that line item, and any type of, you know, entry fee that we would, that we would send a team to or a group to. Just some highlights at the bottom there is really just a comparison of our high school and our middle school sports, and, you know, I do this every year, and I'm proud to say that, you know, we operated about 30% of our students participate in some type of athletic program here, both at the high school and at the middle school. And again, we do a lot with a little, and not including salaries and transportation, that equates to about $56 per student athlete that we spend per kid. And again, I think, I think we get a pretty good bang for our buck, for our dollar, so. Anybody have any questions?
I'm just curious why there's nothing budgeted this year for repairs or rental of buildings and equipment?
We don't think anything's going to break right now. We fixed a few items last year. We're going to buy a new set of soccer goals. We have a brand-new gym. That was one of the issues, that we've had to replace basketball goals in there. They were outdated. So, we're pretty good. We're feeling pretty good as far as repairs and things like that so far.
One last question. The fees that are generated through the sale of tickets for the football games, where does that money go to? And what we charge for the games, how does that compare to other districts in the area?
Our league pretty much sets, everybody's pretty similar as far as that, we're one of the lower ones, but we're pretty commensurate with what everybody else does. But where that revenue goes, that then pays for all the officials for all of our different athletics. So, there, we have revenue generating sports, such as football, basketball, wrestling, and obviously, our senior nights. Those groups pay for all of our, all of our officials that we use, grade 7 through 12.
Gary, can I ask a question in regards to, I see it says, all coaches go through the first aid, health, and safety. Are they CPR certified?
They are not. They are not.
Has there ever been any thought to doing that?
We did think about it. Again, we're just, we comply with the Federation. I know Mr. Thomas certifies our, our aides, et cetera, but, you know, we have a trainer on-site at each of our venues, and although I think CPR is a wonderful thing to know, we oftentimes leave that to our trainer in the medical profession and the medical personnel to take care of any type of catastrophic injury on the field.
But the trainers aren't at practices, correct?
Yes, they are.
Oh, they are? Okay.
I just wanted to say, since I missed the last meeting, but I did watch the playback of the meeting, and I wanted to commend you, Gary, and the committee that did the work on the strategic goals for the next five years. It's simple, but everything on that list is important, and I think it's good work, and I wanted to commend you for that. And also, once again, commend you for the budget restraint that you bring to us year in and year out.
Thank you.
So, I want to thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to facilities. Mr. Cardwell?
Good evening. I first would like to give you an overview of the Facilities Department staffing level. The Facilities Department has a total of 37 budgeted positions. 24 of those are custodians, 6 are mechanics, 4 ground technicians, 1 supervisor, 1 part-time secretary, and a 1 facilities director. This team manages and operates 600 and 10,000 square feet of building space, and also manages 106, excuse me, 160 acres of grounds that's made up of the portfolio of the Potts Grove School District. The Potts Grove School District's portfolio of the, of their real estate, buildings and ground is roughly $100 million in value. The Facilities Department manages that with a $1.6 value. That's our budget, $1.6 million. So, out of that $100 million asset, we take care of all of that property and building space with 1% of that. I would go in, excuse me, I'd like to go into our five goals that we put in place this year, and some of those goals will continue on next year as well as we continue to grow our department. Goal number one, establish and implement effective systems and standards. Goal number two, monitor efficiencies of service to control costs. Goal number three, provide service to our customers at a high standard and equitably. Goal four, continue to modernize work practices through new technical practices and equipment. The final goal five, provide safe, clean, comfortable schools to allow for educational activities to take place. Our budget comparison. Budget year 2015, 2016, our budget was $1,694. Our proposed budget for 2016 and 17, $1,685.54. We have a reduction of $8,460, a fifth of a percent. The critical fund line items for us is maintenance. The line number The critical fund line items for us is maintenance, the line number 2610. We had a one-time reduction to our budget of $34,000. That was associated directly with that line item, and that was due to the mold and HVAC study done at Ringing Rocks Elementary School. Custodial services, 2620, a reduction of $17,260, and that was due to a one-time purchase of modernizing the cleaning equipment throughout the district. There was equipment that was beyond repair and also outdated, did not serve the function of proper use.
So you mean that the, that the Ringing Rocks mold was in the 2015-16 budget?
Correct.
And that won't be in the, in next year's budget?
Correct.
And the same with the second item that you referenced?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Our grounds budget, 2630, there's an increase in that budget line of $14,500, basically 18%. The reason for that increase, as we expanded our fields and both the turf field and the practice field, softball field, we needed to add more money into the supplies to maintain and manage those fields. And along with the agronomic program that we just implemented this year here, there's a cost for that program as well as maintaining the fields. So that was an increase that was asked for the 2016-'17 budget year net line item. The fourth is ops and maintenance, that's basically utilities and other services, 2690, 2.58% increase, $28,300. That number, just as all of facilities, is a fluid number. That's based off of past history of utility costs, usage, and looking at the stock market, trying to price out the future cost of our utilities, waste services, and snow removal. So when we put the budget together, it's before we actually do bidding for utility costs. So it's an opportunity to have additional savings in that area. As this year here, we did a good job on purchasing gas and electric at a reduced rate, but that was done after this projected budget was put in place.
Sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you now, and I'm, and sorry, I'll just expect that for everybody. If I wait till the end, I've got my questions. So the grounds.
Yes, sir.
What percentage of that $14,500 is specific to the turf field?
I, I haven't broken down to that level. I made it all one big dollar amount. Some of that is too, as the field is in place here, I would go through the specs and see the routine maintenance on it. I just went off of past, my past professional experience for the granulates and maintaining it and so forth like that. So that number could go down, I'm looking for more of it going down than, than going up.
Well, I hope so, because, you know, though, though I voted against the turf field, I seem to remember that one of the reasons that people were in favor of it was the promise of practically no maintenance costs.
So, and I'll clarify this, that whole $14,000 is not for the turf field.
I understand, that's why I asked the question.
Right, most of the things that, when we put our agronomic program in place, the district hasn't really did any maintenance to the common space around our buildings. So we're gonna control dandelions, if you look now, you'll see dandelions and so forth. We finally got our test results back from Penn State, so we could put down a proper application and a proper amount. One is doing that, so we're cost savings, we're using the right thing, the right amount. So those results just came in last week. We're waiting for our supply of fertilizer and weed and feed to come in. The bulk of that cost is geared towards the common space that we really haven't maintained at a high standard. We normally mulch our flower beds once a year, we move it to twice a year, one before graduation and one at the start of the school year, and maintain those flower beds. The fertilization of the common area, we start, you know, from March into April and then continue on with various other treatments to nourish the, the turf. So the bulk of that cost is for the common area.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Major cost drivers for facilities, 70% of our budget is associated with utilities and other services, waste and snow. As you can see what's laid out there, trash collection, snow remover, water and sewer, communication, natural gas, electric, and heating oil. We'll continue to implement our best practice on conserving energy to help keep the cost down, analyze pricing of utilities to purchase those commodities at the right time, to get a best, a better cost for us. The second largest is 20% of our budget cost is associated with maintenance. Maintaining, you know, a $100 million portfolio, it takes a lot of nuts, bolts, and screws to keep things together there. So that's contracted services, repairs, and maintenance, supplies, and equipment. That's solely the maintenance technician and outside services. Those services are items that we can't fix. For instance, we just had to bring our elevators up to standard for emergency lighting. That was a $7,000 cost that I had to have an elevator contractor come in and do those repairs. Or any other major repairs, we use outside services for that. In a way, we monitor that as a review on our work orders, obviously shopping for the best price of service before we commit to any repairs from an outside contractor, and then quantity control over our supplies. Really try to do more of it just in time, delivery compared to, you know, I need 10 tires for carts, but we order 20. So you have a liability of 10 sitting on the shelf that you, you didn't need at that moment. So we look at just ordering what we need in a small reserve of one or two of our items, so it won't be a delay in service to our customers, but not a bulk amount of items on, sitting on the shelf. If, anyone have any questions?
I just, just had a quick question. When we apply fertilizer, are our crew, are they certified that they can put the applications down?
Yes, so we have three grounds technicians now that have state license. One thing we are implementing, so fertilizer, believe it or not, is not one of the things that you have to post for. But I believe in, if we have children using our fields, we need to post for fertilizer. It's more or less of the pest control and then the herbicides. So, but we do post for fertilizer and letting the community know that this is the, the chemical that we're putting on the lawn for growth purpose.
My first question is a two-part question under contracted services on your budget breakdown. So from 2013-14, we had 1,800, well, not budgeted, but spent. So my first part of my question, why we spent 26,000 this year? My second part of the question is why are we going from 1,800 to 6,000 of contracted services? What falls under that?
So that was a one-time spend of the $20,000 for the contractor to do the study of Ringing Rocks. We're still in the middle of that, analyzing the issue at Ringing Rock. So like I said, one time, it goes back to the $6,000.
Under custodial, travel conferences, we spent 160 in 2011, 12, I guess nothing the year after, 300 the next couple of years. Why are we planning on spending 2,000 for travel and conferences for custodial?
Well, I, that falls under one of my goals, trying to develop our staff to, you know, we look at cleaning sometimes as as a basic cleaning, but teaching staff on how to sterilize, sanitize our facilities, and new techniques when we purchase equipment and so forth. We do travel sometimes to other school districts or conferences to look at the equipment, do tests of the equipment, and also, like I said, send staff to train it. I'm working with Penn State now to have our entire staff trained in integrated pest management control. So they'll come out to our facility, but it's a cost to train the 30-plus staff in the various areas on how to manage pests in our building.
Under grounds, repairs and maintenance, the numbers have been all over the place. But to, last year, I guess it was spent 6,000, this year, or for next year, you're budgeting 18,000. Why, why three times that amount?
Well, if I look at 2005 and '16, it was 17.5, it was an increase of $500. So, yeah, 500, as our equipment age, it needs more repairs. So that was one reason when we, the last month, we went over a capital budget program, and one of the things in there was a line item to replace some of our aging grounds equipment. If you replace the equipment, that operating dollar number goes down because you're not repairing the equipment as often due to failure of usage and abuse and wear and tear.
Well, we hear things like that, but I seldom see that in the final numbers. For example, Mr. Rubenowitz brought up a good point. So where, in regards to the turf fields, we as a community were promised savings of money and maintenance and so forth. So where in this, over the past however many years we see on here, are we seeing savings moving forward in regards to turf fields?
Well, I think we first had to establish a baseline, so when the field is actually completed, that would be our baseline. But I could tell you where you're gonna save money at. You don't have to paint lines, so you're not buying paint for that field, you're not spending labor hours of painting the field as the natural turf field. You're basically taking a piece of equipment on a tractor and grooming over it and dropping granulates down. So that's where the savings is. The bulk of that grounds cost is for the common space.
Let me interrupt. So where do we see that savings on here, on the number?
I can't give you that savings right now because I haven't established a baseline. I can't tell you the cost for sure, but where the savings is, we haven't even spent anything on the field. So that's where I'm getting at it. That's, I can't tell you the savings until I create a baseline starting. And then what I can do with that is compare that to the labor hour and material spent on the turf field versus a natural field, and then that's where I could give you the savings. So it'll be really over a period of time, once the field is finished, I can even do one on a monthly basis, once it's up and running, compare the time, material, and labor that we spend on our natural turf stadium out here versus the artificial turf stadium. So I can give that to you once that field is established.
I hear what you're saying, I'm just looking, you know, as far as needing a baseline, I'm just looking, you're requesting a budget for next year, and some of that's based on history, some of that's based on the unknown. I understand that, but I will be looking forward to seeing frequent reports showing us, and then when we come back to this next year, seeing the difference in the line items because of the money we're saving.
Absolutely.
I have another last question, I believe, on snow removal.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just curious, so was, you know, we were averaging 5,000 earlier in the decade, and no costs go up, but now we're looking at three times that amount on average. Why is that? I'm just curious.
Well, I think if you look at historical trend of weather over the past six years, three years, you had major snowstorms at, in this area, one storm gave you the average total of snow for one year. So move, removing that snow, we bring in an outside company as well as our own staffs. Our staff wouldn't be able to clear the equipment we have and amount of people, we can't clear the high school or the middle school. So your vendor brings in large earth removing, removing equipment, when you get 22 inches, 15 inches of snow, to try to clear parking as much as possible for the teachers and students to have that space, it's just not pushing it now. You're pushing it, picking it up, in some cases, moving it out to other locations. So you're paying a premium rate for the equipment because you're bringing in larger equipment to move that, that snow, and then they spend more hours working. The last snowstorm we, we, we had, the vendor and our staff literally worked from Friday night, Saturday, up until Monday morning. And I will say this, our staff and the vendor, we did a great job. We were ready to open, unfortunately, the roads weren't ready for us to be open, but we cleared everything in a decent manner.
And that makes sense, and you guys do a great job, I have to say, your, your guys and ladies, keeping up the grounds, including with the snow. I do have one question I forgot. When you came on board this year, between then and now, have the maintenance staff, custodial staff received some sort of communication equipment, I don't know, iPads or tablets? I'm not up to date on the technology.
Yes, one, and, and thank you to Michael and his team helping out with this. Our grounds department had no devices except for a cellphone to communicate, but they're part of our school due work order system. So it would be almost a 24-hour to 48-hour delay getting information out to them. One thing we just implemented this year, and I think Mr. D'Enzo will appreciate this, they have, the grounds staff now have mini iPads. Every day by 10 o'clock, they're communicating to Mr. D'Enzo and I on our field condition, so that way we could determine if the fields can be used, if they can't be used, where problems are, and also they're able to respond to their own work orders. So if a teacher, Mr. D'Enzo, any of his coaches put in a, a, a issue on the field, it doesn't have to be an email to me, and then I have to track the person down to tell them what the issue is. It goes right through the work order, they're able to receive that information directly and as any email communication now. So that was one of the goals, too, bringing our staff up to best standards.
I just have a comment. This is an example of something that raises concerns for me in your decision-making and costs and purchases, to be honest with you. We're, we're, I'm not sure if there's a misunderstanding of the, this community compared to past communities or districts you've worked in, but I have a hard time understanding the need for the custodial staff and maintenance staff, who are as important as everybody else here, that's not the point, needing an iPad. To say that they wouldn't get the, the work order 24 to 48 hours after, I mean, I, I don't, what did we do, five, 10 years ago? You know, they quote, only had cellphones. Did they have cell, did they have cellphones 10 years ago? I, I mean, this was done prior to iPads, and I really struggle seeing the need for staff that are within the building and have the ability to, you know, be out and about and stop in the main office and, and even get cellphone calls, to have the need for iPads. It's just a comment.
Mr. Parker, I'm, I'm not sure if you were on the board when we started to implement school due, but it's a work order system. And part of that system requires them to pull the work orders from some piece of technology. They can't just get a piece of paper, they'd have to go in, come back. This was also part of, of the building improvement plan, partially, you know, when Mr. Katzenmoyer was here, and then Mr. Cardwell continued it and embellished it, made it further because we were able to get the second piece of, of school due, and really take a look at how efficiently we were able to process the work orders. We surveyed stakeholder groups and got feedback from them, and using that data, they set goals for themselves, and this is part of that process that started well before you were here.
I understand that, and, and actually, that's on my, I think it falls under technology, I kinda earmarked school due and have some concerns regarding that program, which I guess I'll wait for that.
If I could just add one piece to that, too, the custodians do not have any technical equipment because they're inside the building. We use the PA system or a, a radio, actually. It's for staff that is mobile, that's traveling around, has that piece of equipment there, so.
Oh, you answered my question in reference to the snow, which was, we only had one major storm this year, but, but you answered it, you know, but what a storm, right? So, you know, quantity and quality, I guess, make a difference. I want to again commend you, and, and, you know, I think that, personally, I think it's great that, that your staff has the appropriate communications equipment to be efficient. But let's just earmark that as something for discussion as we crunch the numbers in the budget, and we can see how the board as a whole feels when we start getting to the nitty and the gritty, so.
We're gonna move on to pupil services in just a second, but we're gonna take a, a two-second commercial break, because Mr. Leach is, and rightly so, said, "We, we don't have new business tonight, but we just want to make sure that while the audience is fresh and awake out there, that you're aware of our drug summit, drug summit on prevention." Dr. Ziegler, do you want to just?
Dr. Ziegler, do you want to just come up and just say a word or two real quick?
Absolutely. Sorry. So on Friday, May 6, from 9 to 11 o'clock, our drug task force, which is called Speak Up Stand Up, has decided to host a drug summit at the Western Montgomery County Career Technology Center. It is, we've invited all the principals and their guidance counselors from Montgomery County and the PAC-10. So if you know some, encourage them to send a staff member out. It could be also community members, social groups, like we actually have after-work, rehab after work's coming, and we're going to have a panel discussion with some professionals on drug prevention and drug education for schools. So May 6, 9 to 11 p.m., eh, I'm sorry, 9 to 11 a.m., we're serving breakfast at the Western Center by our students, and it's open to the public. Thank you.
We're going to move on to pupil services. Mrs. Paceto.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to briefly share some overarching goals for the departments that serve as a foundation for this process listed in your packet. The first is to implement appropriate programming in the least restrictive environment for all special education students, providing comprehensive supports and interventions to meet the needs of diverse learners in our district, removing barriers to education to increase student academic performance and goal attainment, increasing efficiency as well as defensibility of all of our programs within the departments, and finally, ensuring equity and access for all of our students in the district. Listed below, you'll see a budget comparison. This year budgeted $3,236,700, 3.2 million dollars. I'll estimate that. Sorry about that. My first time in front of one of these microphones. And then projected for the coming school year, just over $3 million. This represents nearly a 5% anticipated budget reduction and a cost savings anticipated of $159,000. There are many cost drivers in pupil services and special education, and you see those listed in your packet and on the website as well. I plan to review listed below some of the major line items and certainly interrupt me with any questions that you have. The first major cost driver is occupational therapy. All of our occupational therapists are contracted through, through agencies, and they service our students in the district. This is line item 1229, and this year budgeted $227,000. We, you see listed there a slight change for the upcoming school year, but actually, I shared with you in recent meetings that we recently received a withdrawal of La Presiosa's bid, who's been a longtime servicer of occupational therapy in the district. So since that time, I've been soliciting bids and preparing to share some information with you at an upcoming meeting about how this may impact our costs for occupational therapy in the upcoming school year. We anticipate that there may be some savings in that area, perhaps significant, depending upon which bid we go with, and I'll, I'll be sharing that with you shortly. So this line item may change even, even further in upcoming meetings. The next major cost driver that I'd like to, to bring up is our learning support line item. This reflects a 57% increase for the upcoming school year. Not to be concerned, really, this, that increase predominantly is actually a transfer of funds. It's nursing service, a contracted nursing service for a student with significant medical needs. This year, it was earmarked under life skills. It's more appropriately listed under learning support services, so you'll see a reduction in one, and it's just being transferred within the budget. Moving on to early intervention services. Many of you know that this time every year, we go through a transition process. Our eligible students eligible for special education that receive services through the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, we go through a pretty exhaustive and comprehensive process for transitioning them to school-age special education services. Some families go through that process and opt to stay in the intermediate unit for an additional year. They're able to do that by law if the student is, is still five. And then the IU bills the district for, for those expenditures. So you'll see contracted, contracted expenses listed in 1280. This varies year to year. It's not a number that we can speak to with any great confidence at this point. It's going to take a few more months until I have, well, actually, families can make up their mind up until the first day of school. So what we did was looked at historical years and have budgeted for one of the higher amounts just to be safe, knowing that that may come down depending on what the population looks Moving on to other special education services, 1290. This is where we anticipate significant savings. We have been very carefully attending to our students in out-of-district placements, many of which, as we improve and expand the quality of our programs in district and what we can offer, we're seeing many students be able to return to the district. We're anticipating, and I need to make, draw your attention to a slight change there. Special education services, far right column, the dollar change, that should actually be a minus $221,000. We, we are under budget presently for this year. I do want to caution that that can change at any time tomorrow. We have families enroll all the time in the district, students with significant needs. We do have students that graduate, we have move-ins, so things do change in that regard. But we do anticipate roughly $221,000 savings in that area. Moving on to psychologist services. This, this line item, 2140, largely represents contracted school psychologist services where, when our caseloads in district are, are over what is manageable, and in order to stay compliant, we do occasionally contract out some of these evaluations. The other thing that's included in this line item is we have a student assistance program counselor in the middle school through the Lincoln Center. She supports the initiatives in the building, she runs groups, identifies students that are at risk, and brings community resources to those students to help meet their educational needs as well as emotional and social needs. Those are the main cost drivers in the budget and where we'll see the largest percent change anticipated for the upcoming school year. Pretty pleased to say that we're anticipating some savings without reducing the quality or quantity of any of our programs for our students. Any questions?
Kate, I raised a couple of board meetings ago and realized you've only been on the job for two weeks here in this new role, but I did want to raise it again a second time. I have heard from several parents in the K2s, essentially, who have expressed some concerns about the composition of some special education classrooms, including learning support students mixed with, oh, I forget the designation, emotional support, yes, that's right, kids. So, and what I've been told that is in the past, whether what I've been told is correct or not, is they may have been in separate classrooms, and now they're together, and maybe that might be causing some angst for some of our parents. So I was just curious to know if you have any thoughts about that. Mrs. Viola pointed out to me that, that we're bound by, by state law to a certain extent with, with these placements, and I understand that. But, but I don't want the issue to drop, so I wanted to make sure I said it to our director now that we have one.
Certainly, state and federal regulations do drive some of this, and a student's disability, it does not require that, you know, if a student receives emotional support, it doesn't mean that they must be in an emotional support classroom. The IEP team, which the parent is a part of, determines the most appropriate placement and the least restrictive environment that I mentioned earlier. So we do see some mixed groupings in, in classes. Sometimes we're placing students prior to necessarily knowing them if they're a new registrant, so we are modifying plans all the time. But your point is heard, and we're always looking to improve the way that we're servicing, which is one of the reasons that we're requesting and hoping to add a special education position at the elementary level to meet some of these needs that you bring up.
Just a minor question and one other question. Under pupil health for books and supplies, why is such a huge increase?
Could you tell me the line number, Bill? I'm having trouble following you.
Page four or five, 2,400, and then 600 under the 2,400. Couple of years ago was, you know, 11, 11,000, and now we're looking at almost 28,000 for books and supplies. Especially with the increase in technology, I'm always concerned when I see such huge increases. Can, I don't know, and can I also say, by the way, very commendable, you're just, what, two weeks we said, Rick, and to pull all this together. So if you don't have the answer right here, I completely understand.
Thank you.
And I'll chime in on this one because I know Kate hasn't had a chance to delve into, into the budget as, as deeply as she'd like. The, this, this section incorporates a lot of things, but the largest component is nursing supplies throughout all of our buildings. So our five, our five buildings. And quite frankly, historically, our nurses have under budgeted in the past. We've come up to mid-year and they don't have enough money in their budget to buy their tissues for the spring allergy season or whatever. So we did incorporate an increase this year to, to cover the actual cost of their programs. So the, the largest component is a nursing supply bid that goes out every year, which constitutes $19,000. There's some other small components beyond that, but that's, that's the major component.
One other question. We spend an awful lot of money on contracted services in this department, and maybe this is more from Dave, just known from history and so forth, but would we not do better by having our own staff? I know you're always looking to bring kids back and self, do some, you know, self-contained rooms here and hiring staff for that, which I appreciate, but how about the OTs and the psychology, psychological services and those sort of things? Would it not be better to do that in-house?
Do you want me to speak tonight? Feel free to, feel free to jump in. We actually have run some numbers doing cost comparisons with contracted services. We do contract some paraprofessionals as well, student aides, things like that. And we, we have looked at the numbers. When you add in the cost of, of benefits and Peasars contribution, it typically drives that cost up more significantly than, than contracting, but there's, there's always room to reconsider those things. Certainly add to that, Dave, if you'd like.
Yeah, I mean, the, with the Peasars contribution currently being at 30%, it's, it adds a lot to the cost of an employee. And our healthcare programs are very comprehensive healthcare programs, but as part of that, they're also very costly. So in, unless there's a significant savings in the per-hour rate, it probably isn't going to generate a savings if we, if we hire somebody in-house. But we do continually look at those options.
Just one other consideration on that topic, too. Sometimes, because the population and the needs are so fluid and things come up very quickly, we have, we have a student register, and we have to do our due diligence to have him or her in school within five days. And if there are staffing requirements, we need to move really quickly. So that, that plays a role as well.
Kate, I wasn't here to vote yes for your appointment two weeks ago, so I wanted to say that I would have voted yes and congratulate you on, on the new position. It's well deserved, and thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, we're going to move on to technology.
Thank you and good evening. The technology department at Potts Grove has three major goals, two of which come directly from the district, district's comprehensive plan. The first is to incorporate appropriate, purposeful, and effective technology tools to support the implementation of a standards-based curriculum. At elementary, we are implementing professional development in that division that will hopefully yield more effective use of technologies towards improvements in instructional practices and student outcomes while expanding access to those technologies. At the secondary level, we continue to one-to-one professional development in the secondary division in order to increase faculty proficiency as measured by a number of tools that we use, including the education technology profile survey. And we also look at, at student performance tasks and levels of student engagement. Our second goal, which does not come directly from the plan, but if we don't do this, we can't do anything else, and that is, we need to maintain and at times expand a robust data network that supports all the district programs and operations in a, an environment, technological environment that's rapidly changing, and demands on, on our network are constantly evolving. And then the third is to maintain and expand as needed tools and practices that promote effective internal and external communication. So if we take a look at budget comparisons, and this is going to, my numbers will vary again a little bit from what, what you see on the more detailed sheet. But our total budget request last year was $1,210,301. And our request this year is $1,201,457 for a .73% reduction, or in dollar terms, $8,844. Excuse me. There are four objects in my budget that are of consequence for two reasons. Three of the four are my three, are my three main budget drivers, and I'll get to those in more detail in a moment. And then the fourth is, is travel and training, which in dollar value is not a significant percentage, but we've made some changes there and have a, what I think is a nice return on investment that I'll, I'll also discuss in a, in a few moments. So we look at two objects in the budget, 758 and 768. That's new and replacement equipment. I combined those two because from year to year, the balance between what we replace, in other words, equipment that ages out and we simply need to replace it, it's existing. This is aside from computers, that's a separate line item, but mostly dealing with network infrastructure. Sometimes, you know, a, a piece of equipment simply has lived out its useful life, and we have to replace it, and that comes out of the replacement portion of that. And then sometimes, again, depending on, on new demands placed on, on our network, we have to purchase equipment to manage those demands that we haven't had before, and that's, that comes out of the new equipment. The variation, the variance on that this year, it represents a $1,000 increase or two, or 2.2% of the, of my total budget, or a 2.2% increase, rather, that, which is, represents the total line item, 2.2% of the total line item. I'll get that right. The second area is, is the biggest cost driver, quite frankly. It's object 442. It is our leases. We currently have four large leases and one very small lease for some office computers, office equipment. We generally, and we've talked about this in the We generally, and we've talked about this in the past, we generally have a four-year replacement cycle, so as a lease falls off, we maintain, we bring on a new lease to keep our equipment functional and the equipment that gets heavy use is, tends to be, you know, in it four years old or less. So we're asking to do the same thing this year, that will retire a large lease and will replace it with a lease of precisely the same size, and we are also retiring a very small lease that we're not intending to replace at this point. In addition to that, and Mr. Nestor can address this, he will address this later, we also include in our, in our lease numbers, lease purchases we do for special education, and we found some duplication in that because special education was allocating some of those dollars as well. So where I'm showing a .83% increase or a $5,500 increase, that's actually negated by an offset somewhere else in the budget, and Mr. Nestor will speak to that. The other area that is, you know, in six figures, which is how I guess I categorize my major cost drivers, is software. We have lots and lots of different software programs, all of them requiring licenses, either annual renewals or one-time license purchases. Depending on the license, it could be infrastructure, software, it can be software for the end-user on a computer or an iPad. There is an increase there of 7.87% or $9,595. Much of that is attributed to an increase in our Microsoft licensing, a different tier of service that we need to go to to stay in compliance with Microsoft's licensing rules. And that's not just Microsoft Office, by the way, on computers, that's all of our server software and so forth. So everything that falls, that has a Microsoft brand is licensed under that, under that line item. And then finally, and I said I would spend a little bit of time on this, it's not a big-ticket item per se relative to other areas of my budget, but travel and training, we're able to drop that by 20% or $2,500. Training, or travel, I should say, also includes, you know, travel, and my staff does, you know, around the district. Most of my staff are building-based, I like it that way, they know the faculty, they know the routines, but I still have staff that travels from place to place, so there's that. But we've also made some significant investments in some key staff members in training that has actually realized a very significant savings in professional services. So a lot of things that we used to have to, we used to have to bring in outside people, my staff can now do. So while we made some investments there over the last couple of years, going down to the last part of that first table, we're able to cut our professional services costs by $21,000 or a drop of 46.6%. Now, also included in that is we now purchase service credit vouchers at reduced hourly rates that can roll from one year to another. So sometimes if we have a better year than we anticipate, we can roll those service credits into the next year. So we're, so those two, those two strategies has allowed us to, have allowed us to drop that, drop that line item pretty significantly. Now, looking at my cost drivers, when we talk about leases, we're talking about all faculty, secretarial support, students, administrators, computers, and iPads mainly, and some of the accessories that go with them. That comprises the four, well, the four major leases, four larger leases and the one smaller We monitor, again, the effective use of those technologies with a number of survey tools. We're able to, we're able to determine needs through monthly meetings with tech lead teachers from each building. I meet with them first Thursday of every month, and we review, we review those building needs. We also, my own staff, which again are building, my staff is building-based, they also communicate needs as they see them. Plus, we can, we develop leases that get at some of those, some of those goals we discussed. The second big cost driver is my maintenance contracts, maintenance and contract renewals. This encompasses all service contracts for hardware and really talking mostly network infrastructure. Internet data, internet and data services. We have a 10-gig fiber backbone to our network that runs among the five buildings. That fiber is leased, that's a, that's a significant portion of that, of that budget line item. It's maintenance on our student information system, support, custom reporting, integration with other systems, the service renewals on our library, automation software, transportation software, health office, school lobby security, video streaming, school messenger, and a number of other systems that we have. And we monitor those contracts annually to determine the cost benefit of maintaining a contract. At some point, the equipment is no longer worth the service contract, so we will drop the service contract, and then we'll put, you know, we'll keep a little bit of money on reserve in case we have to repair or replace it. We also assess the tiers of service on a regular basis. How vital is that piece of equipment to the operation of the district? Do we need a four-hour turnaround time, or is 24 hours sufficient? So we look at that, and of course, as the, as contracts come up for renewal, we look at negotiating. This year, E-rate allows us to include some of, some contracts related to specific equipment that qualifies under new E-rate rules, and so we're going to see, you know, a little bit of savings there because we applied for that, we applied for that support. And then finally, the software is the other big cost driver, and we talked about the Microsoft licensing. It's the software that runs our virtual servers, website, Adobe licensing, technology help desk, apps, and so forth. And, you know, we examine usage, you know, so we're, you know, we look at the Adobe usage, which is actually quite high, we look at Microsoft usage on the end-user applications. We coordinate any large curricular software with the curriculum department, with the principals to determine the cost benefit and to make sure that the software purchase request is consistent with curriculum and teaching methodologies. So that's, that's my, those are the significant areas of the budget. There are other smaller areas of the budget there. Level funded this year, or my request is to level fund them this year. We had a small reduction in our supply, in our supply budget, but that's essentially it, and it yields a .73% savings. Questions?
With all the new technology, which most of it's over my head with the cloud and all this other stuff, I would think that the printing costs have gone down and will continue to go down. Is that true? If not, why not? And if it is true, is that reflected in the budget?
That's an excellent question, and the answer for me personally, and I think for Mr. Nestor, is disappointing. We actually did a comparison of September to April of the 2014-15 school year and September to April of the 2015-16 school year, and print usage shifted, but, but overall went up. And it amounted to, I think we did in about, I don't have that sheet right in front of me, but about two or three more trees, because actually the software converted into tree loss and actually a carbon dioxide emissions. And so we killed about three additional trees this year. We see print usage in key areas in the middle and the high school going down. And I don't want to throw any division under the bus, because I think DO owns a bit of this, elementary owns a bit of this because some of the curriculum is comprised of consumables. We also have waste, and we just had a discussion about this with the principals today with photographs. So it's an ongoing battle. I can tell you that when, when we go to county-level meetings, tech directors are observing the same thing. Step one is to get printing to be shifted over to copiers. Frankly, it doesn't save any more trees, but that's a lease, and those consumables are part of the lease, so it saves the district money. But not all the copiers, in fact, none of the copiers except for district office, I think, I could be wrong on that, are color. So that brings us back to those printers. I will say that we put a line item of $20,000 in an open purchase order for toner. We expended that at the end of March this year, and we're running off of, right now, we're not replacing toner in certain lower priority printers and only replacing it in the higher volume printers, and we're running off some supply dollars. Those supply dollars are getting cut in this budget coming up, so for what it's worth.
Is there a plan, to make a plan in the near future? Because it sounds like you all were just, you know, looking at these numbers, so that's understandable, but can we get some feedback prior to the start of next year, what the plan is, to message out through the principals to the staff and admin offices first?
My pleasure, and I think Mr. Nestor and I, and, you know, have been going around with this for a couple, a few years now, I think. And that's why we got the monitoring software, because we knew we were printing a lot, we just didn't know how much. Now we know how much.
Destiny Maintenance?
Yes.
Library Automation. Can you just share with us what that is?
Yes, that's the, that's a circulation desk software that, it connects directly to Power School, and it's what we use to monitor checkout and check-in of books.
Is that a one-time fee or an annual?
No, it's an annual support fee. Very seldom will you find software of that type that doesn't have an annual support fee. Almost everything we have along those lines is annual support. That's where the big money is made.
I could have swore I saw something in here that said ClearPass. Now, I looked it over ten times and I can't find it.
You did. No, you did, and we, that's a zero, that's zeroed out. ClearPass is a, was, is a project that we've been wanting to do for a few years now, and in the late, and when you see the next iteration of that budget sheet, you will see a zero there. It's one more year, we're not going to do it. But essentially what ClearPass is, it's a technology that is put out by Aruba, which makes our wireless network, the equipment on our wireless network, and it validates guest computers, looks for, it's, it gives us what's called edge intelligence. It means that at the very edge of our network, if somebody tries to come on, it can monitor whether they have updated virus software, it can deny or, you know, deny them access depending on, you know, what it finds. It gives us some ability to better manage our guest network that we don't currently have. So it's, but we're not going to do it this coming year.
One more comment before my last question.
Sure.
I meant to say, kudos to you, you said something to the fact, and it caught my attention, you know, you trained your staff, now you're bringing them back, so I guess your contracted services, sending people out for training, is going to be cut back. That's what I think we need to be hearing more throughout the district, throughout the departments. It bugs me to some degree when we have so many educated administrators, instructional coaches, this, that, and the other, yet we continually have to bring in specialists, and we have to send people out for this and that, and it kind of is like, well, we're paying all this money for these high-level, highly-educated, highly-trained staff, yet we keep seeing these requests come in. So I'm happy to hear that your department is looking at that and is starting to do things in-house. Last question. We all know my concern because it came up earlier. School Dude, a work order maintenance system for $10,000 a year. I'd rather lose another tree and go back to, you know, do we really save money by doing this, this way?
With a name like School Dude, it's got to be good. You know, we had another system prior to it. Essentially, it allows us to look at how our, how our resources, people are allocated, how many work orders they're processing in a day, a week, a year. We can look at open work orders and say, and reach out and say, what's going on with this? Have you communicated with, you know, with the teacher, you know, why the delay? It's, I would be hesitant to take it away from my staff. I mean, I can turn it over to Jeff. The facilities department adopted it about a year or two after technology adopted it, but prior to that, we had another system. It wasn't quite as, wasn't quite as flexible, but we do, we can get pretty granular on the efficiency reports in terms of how our, how our staff is being, being used, how long it's taking, again, to...
And just to piggyback on that, Mr. Wagman, I'm not sure if you're aware of this, Mr. Parker, but a couple of boards ago, we were having some issues in our facilities department with things getting done, with our facility upkeep and so on and so forth, and the board asked me to work with the facilities department to research and put in best practice, and we did a lot of research, and School Dude really is a piece of software that is being utilized in many places, that has made a significant impact on our efficiency, our ability to track, as Mr. Wagman said, and our ability to really evaluate the department and how it's doing. So that's why, that's the impetus behind it. It's been probably three years now?
Yeah, it's been three years. It also allows us, my techs to share experience, so when my second level of support goes in, they can see the notes from the, from the person in the building, and so they're not duplicating a lot of, a lot of steps that have already been taken and didn't prove fruitful. I don't know if you want to add to that, Mr. Parker?
I think you and the superintendent covered everything. I mean, just the data reports that come out of there, I can get to a granular level with my staff and say, how many work orders you're completing in a day, and do a comparison between each person, and then look at, why is it taking so long to do this work order? Because that information is tracked there. There was multiple things that were broken or damaged compared to what the request was. So it just allows you to look at the efficiency of your time, where you're spending money at, and also how to improve your service and your efficiencies.
Do you think it's possible that, absent a system like that, we could inadvertently end up needing or paying for more staff than is necessary? I guess my question is, is the $10,000 we're spending an investment that actually saves us money in the long run?
In my profession, once, one of my past employment, many years back, what School Dude does, it took three full-time staff people to do that. So 10... So $10,000 versus whatever a annual salary of the three individuals, I would say is well worth the $10,000 that we're using it for. And also, pretty much, that's the standard in this practice of facilities and technology. No one's doing it by paper. Everything is in that immediate time response.
Yeah, it, you know, it allows us to be accountable to the people we're serving in the classrooms, and I'll just turn that around. If one of us came to you and said, we need an additional staff member, you would rightly ask, where's the data to show it? And this is the system we would dive into to give you that data.
And that's a good point, Mr. Wagman. I don't want to spend so much time on School Dude, that it's one of many, many, many things we have here, but again, I'll come back to Mr. Benowitz's asked question, a good question as far as, is, you know, are we saving money? Are we saving staff? Again, what I think we as a board need to start doing is say, well, kind of what you just said, all right, well, show us the numbers. I want to see. So if this was purchased three years ago, maybe things are getting done better, things are more efficient that way, which is, that was the goal, but if we're saying it's saving money, then I need to see where it's saving money. But that's, we can move on.
I actually had a couple of questions for you, Michael. One, the physical keyboards at the middle school, they're part of one of those big leases, correct?
That's correct.
And we have one-to-one physical keyboards, if I understand that correctly?
We do.
Do we think we could save some money by, we're not using them one-to-one, are we?
No, we, no, we are not.
So is the plan to return some of them, or do we have to wait for the leases to run out and then just carry a percentage of the number? It seems like that was a wasteful spend, so I'm just, or inadvertently wasteful.
No, that's fair. The intention was, it was based on information we received from Pennsylvania Department of Education regarding the availability of the standardized assessments online and their availability for the iPad. One of the caveats, however, was that you needed to have a wired keyboard. So that was probably the driving purpose. We would have gotten some of them anyway, because, you know, some kids doing longer papers prefer them, of course. We have some students with disabilities where they're helpful, but, no, you're right. They're, at the moment, they are, a lot of them are sitting. We do have an intention to reallocate some of them down to the elementary division.
But will we eventually need them for these standardized tests?
We probably will. That is the, yes. Right now, we are transitioning at the high school with the laptops to online assessments, to keystones. The middle school opted to stay with paper this year, but, you know, there's only going to be so many more years that we'll even have that option, so we will begin to migrate over, I have no doubt.
And my last question, regarding the printing issue. I know from my personal knowledge of printing costs in another school district, that one of the reasons printing costs go up is when copiers don't work. And, you know, professionals that need to have printouts for meetings and such, not having copiers.
Correct.
Use what is available. So I just wonder if that might possibly, are our copiers always in perfect shape, working?
No, but I'll defer to Mr. Nester on this one.
Well, my point is that if you want to save money on printing, one way is to make sure your copiers work, because people use the printers in absence of any other option. And I don't know if that's happening here, but I know it does happen elsewhere.
Oh, absolutely, that's a piece of it. And again, the need for color, real or perceived, the need for color is also a big driver, and convenience is a big driver. Where is the closest printer on between classes? They're all, you know, look, you know, we're an organization of human beings, and sometimes, you know, it's the immediate need that rules the day, but it is a point well taken, and we are. I don't know a district that doesn't have copier issues. I had in my old district, my wife complains about it in her district, I'm sure, you know, that other district, same thing. We just, school districts just beat the heck out of those copiers. You know, we've gone high-end, mid-tier, it doesn't matter. Three different brands that I've experienced, same thing.
We lease our copiers on a four-year term. When I started here, it was a five-year term. We shrunk it down because the fifth year was just too painful. Typically, you get a one-year honeymoon, and then it's all right back to the same process. We could probably employ two or three full-time servicemen on campus. They do have uptime guarantees, unfortunate is uptime guarantees, including, include, you know, 5:00 through PM through 6:00 AM, when nobody would know if they're up or not. But we're continuously looking at options. We tried a new vendor this time around. We haven't had any better success with that vendor, so when we go out again, which will be next summer, we'll probably be looking at another vendor. But yes, copiers are a constant challenge for every district.
I lied, I forgot, one more quick thing. And if we're considering moving our meetings to this location on a permanent basis? Oh, it'd be in the district office? Then I'll withdraw. I was going to ask about the lousy AT&amp;T service we have here in Roxon and the high school, but is there anything that we can do?
Do you want me to address that? Because I can.
Is there any way that can be addressed, or is it really on AT&amp;T?
Well, we went down this road, we used to have, all of our cellphones used to be AT&amp;T. The problem is that AT&amp;T's tower sits on a hill, and the signal goes right over Ringing Rocks and half this building. We tried to get AT&amp;T to address that for us. They would be happy to punch holes into the roof of Ringing Rocks. We were not pleased with that option, to put up an antenna, and they would be happy to bill us for it. So we went to Verizon. Having said, and we haven't had any service issues since, having said that, and that's not a commercial, that's just a fact, we do have, we have some additional savings to offer you around cellphones that I think Mr. Nester will be addressing.
As Emily Letella once said, never mind.
Okay, we're going to go on to curriculum.
Good evening. I believe I'm the caboose of the budget presentations. So as I'm talking through curriculum and the curriculum budget this evening, I want you to pay attention that it's really curriculum, instruction, assessment, and staff development that we're talking about, all encompassed within that. So when I'm talking about curriculum, it really is talking about those four particular areas. As always, within the curriculum department, we're really driven with everything that we do by the two, first two district goals. So one is really the standards-aligned curriculum, and the second being consistent instructional practices. As we were looking at putting together this budget, however, we had some additional goals that are outlined therefore at the top of the page, and I'll just speak about those very briefly. The first and foremost is really increasing the supports, options, and experiences for our students. That is what our job is, so that our goal at each and every day is to make sure that we're providing better options to meet the needs of all those students. The second one is really ensuring equity and access for all students. So no matter what building you're attending, what home you're coming from, all the students in Potts Grove will be getting the same information across those buildings. So those are two rather large pieces. In order to do that, we of course need to expand our teachers, really our entire staff capacity, and building everybody's knowledge so that they can enhance their professional practice, and that allows us to refine our curriculum, instruction, and assessment practices. And we hope to do all of that while decreasing our costs within the curriculum department. So to do a budget comparison from 2015 to 2016, at this point last year, we were at $400,224. This year, we're asking for $390,770. That marks a 2.36% decrease, or in a dollar amount, it's $9,545. So I'll speak very briefly about what are the largest pieces of this curriculum budget, so that you all have kind of some knowledge of where that money is being spent. The first and largest piece of this is really in the instruction line item, and that really encompasses 71% of the overall curriculum budget. So when I'm talking instruction, I'm talking textbooks, materials and resources, all those tools and resources that we're utilizing to support our written curriculum. So that could be textbooks, it could be a program, it could be any number of things, it could be novels, anything along those lines. And again, that encompasses about 71% of the overall budget for curriculum. Looking at guidance, that's really, not to be confused with pupil services or guidance counselors, really, that's really talking about assessment. So, and as well as progress monitoring. So that includes things like performance tracker, it includes fees for scoring of assessments, some mandated, some other assessments that we utilize, and that's what that line item is for. Curriculum is really curriculum development, so that includes some travel, some training, as well as some professional develop, or excuse me, other dues and fees that are included in that, and I'll talk about that in a minute. And then the other piece is staff development. You can see, as we look at these, we're looking at decreases in each of those areas of varying amounts. The one area that says curriculum that has an increase, though that says 11.7%, that was for that particular line item, but that curriculum piece is 2% of the overall curriculum budget, so a small amount in comparison. So that you have, I'm going to provide more information about exactly what each of those looks like, but I also wanted you to understand that there's some other grant monies utilized through the district that are federally funded, that are kind of handled through the curriculum department. The first of those is our Title I grant, and our Title I grant is really looking at low-income, providing supports, additional supports for students from low-income families. That money is generated and allocated federally based upon a number of low-income students that you may have. However, the way in which you use it is by having a set set of criteria, and that allows students to take part, if they meet those criteria, they can take part in those additional services. That is approximately $350,000 in that grant. We use Title I's monies here in this district primarily for personnel working one-on-one or in very small group settings with our students at the elementary level. So the grand majority of that is for personnel. That includes some going for reading specialists, some of our intervention tutors, we have our summer success program, which provides additional learning time for students over the summer, that's also funded through that. The second of those grant options is Title II. This is approximately $100,000, and that's, this is Title II, and that's really to increase the instructional quality within classrooms. So that's really looking at content areas, and it's really looking at increasing teacher, as well as administrator skills in any one of those areas. So there's a lot of professional development that's included in here. So that could include professional learning, it could include job-embedded coaching, any number of things, and that money is use or lose. So we're allocated that from the federal level. If you don't use it, you lose it. So it makes sense for us to use that money. And then the final is Title III, and that's really supporting students who are required by law to have programs for those students whose dominant language, it's not English. So here, we do a number of things. Number one, there's personnel, but a grand majority of that money is, kind of goes through the Montgomery County IU in a consortium. They kind of work with school districts across the county, because when you pool all of your efforts, you can drive costs down. The major cost drivers within this, looking really at the instruction piece, so that's again, all those textbooks, it could include software, materials, and resources, and that's 71% of the overall curriculum budget. So it's important to remember from any year to year, any number of things could be going on. So for example, this year, we have the math program quality review, which we're expecting the results on very shortly. That could indicate for us, after we kind of dive into the meaning of all of that, it could mean eventually down the road that we say, we want to shift the resources that we're using, or the programs that we're using in terms of math instruction. We could do that with English Language Arts, we could do that with science or social sciences, we could do that with any number of things. But that's why it contains such a large portion of the overall curriculum budget. There's a couple of monitoring systems that we have in place to kind of look at that on a very strategic, or in a very strategic way. The first is really a curriculum renewal cycle. So go back a few years, everybody was working towards, this district included, everybody was working towards integration of the PA Core standards. What that meant was everything all at once, and every school district was involved in that per direction of PDE. We're now at a point in time where we can say, let's do this strategically, and over a certain year, a period of time, just like our copiers are on a four-year lease, we begin to look at a cycle of curriculum renewal. So that as we're coming up with math, that kind of has the attention right now, we're collecting information about that, then we'll go into analyzing that information, we'll go into making some decisions about how we're moving forward with that. Assessment, again, not, it's under guidance, but not to be confused with a guidance counselor or pupil services, it's really talking about assessment. So that includes performance tracker, assessments, scoring, many of our data management pieces. So what I will say here is, in fact, most recently, as of this morning, we were having a conversation with our administrative team, talking about what are the assessments? What is each and every assessment that we're currently utilizing in the district? What is the purpose of that assessment? And is, in fact, it's still needed? And we looked at some research going into that, but we really kind of pored over, and we hope to put together a plan, and we've already begun creating some documents in terms of parent communication tools which talk about that. I bring that up because going through that process causes shifts in that particular line item. And then the final piece is really professional learning, or it's under that 2270 or staff development. So this really encompasses a number of pieces. Number one, it includes conference attendance, it includes some summer curriculum writing, we're coming up on that time period, and teachers all year are taking notes right there in their lesson plans or on their unit planners, and making note of some curriculum revisions that need to occur. So as soon as they enter into the summer, they begin that process to refine curriculum or assessments. Also included in here is some job-embedded professional learning, so that could mean a coach, it could be an internal instructional coach, it could be an external instructional coach, working side-by-side with teachers. And we do all of that with building capacity in mind, because we have a lot of really strong, talented people here in Potts Grove. So as we begin, to Mr. Parker's point, as we are getting everybody involved in this staff capacity, what we are seeing is more and more teachers are beginning to stand up and provide professional learning to their colleagues as well. And that could be the result of going to a conference, it could be the result of working with an instructional coach, it could just be a conversation they had with another teacher that they share out in the hallway sometimes. And then the other piece that's included in there is some books for professional learning as well. So let me stop there and ask, are there any questions that I could answer?
Say again, off easy with me, Mr. Wurries, I didn't have time to review your budget in detail, but one thing that you said that caught my attention is that you and the administration were, the rest of the administration were reviewing the assessments done globally, that's an ongoing concern of mine. Very happy that's being looked at, and look forward to seeing the results of that, some kind of report or summary of that. Thank you.
Sure.
And the results of the math program quality review are coming soon, and did I hear you right, that this might have an impact on this budget, depending on what the results are?
Well, going back to the line item that is really that instruction piece, that regular instruction piece, that includes monies in instruction piece, that includes monies in there, Mr. Rabinowitz, that in the event that we would need to move or purchase any new materials or resources to support math, those monies would already be included in here. It wouldn't be an additional expense in terms of what's already written here. It's already budgeted for.
So, we're planning on it, then?
We keep those monies, we have to, you know, what we don't want to do from year to year is have zero in terms of our instruction, because what could happen, one year is you need a new program, and that requires quite a big jump, or they're costly in some cases. So, we have to keep that money available in the event that we would need it. You're welcome.
Mr. Nestor, you want to just summarize this and talk about the savings that we've been looking at?
Absolutely. I passed around another copy of the red, yellow, green sheet that we talked about about a month ago, and I just want to go over what we've been able to achieve thus far, and where we think we're heading. If you can start on the back of the page, actually, the area in blue, when we last spoke, we had a couple additional potential cost drivers that we wanted to keep, keep in mind as we approached the budget. One was the addition of an elementary autistic teacher at the Ringing Rock School, and the potential of needing to add seventy-eight thousand dollars to, to our budget for that position. After a lot of diligent work and evaluation from a number of people around the table here, administration thinks that they can achieve a position savings elsewhere that will offset the impact of that teaching position. So, we're not looking to add that seventy-eight thousand dollars to the budget. Also, when we got our second look rates for our healthcare, the increases were much higher than we anticipated. Was able to sit down with the consultant and the CPAS representatives and discuss the, the fact that we do have a sizable reserve in place for our self-funded healthcare plan, and we were able to negotiate our rate increases based on what we really anticipated, and to utilize some of those reserves. So, we feel we have been able to eliminate the impact of the increases in our healthcare premiums for this year.
So, does that mean, does that mean that the one-point-five million that was previously recommended to be removed from the healthcare reserve needs to stay in, in order to realize these savings?
We have reserves with or without that one-point-five million dollars. So, I mean, there, it's, that's still money we can, we can discuss if the desire is there to put it somewhere else.
Okay, I just want to say, for the record, that, that before we finalize this budget, I'd like to make some decisions about that money, and not leave it sitting there.
Very good.
Thanks.
But, but this is one, one potential use of it, is to mitigate future increases in healthcare premiums.
If we decide to keep it there, then, then I just want it to be an active decision, not a pass-up.
That's fine. So, I felt that was very good news, that we didn't have any significant additions to the budget at this point in time. Then going back over to, to the, to the front of the document, we were asked to, to generate what it would look like to have a one percent tax reduction, or a two percent tax reduction, meaning, we started with two percent increase, so one percent would get us down to, a one percent increase, and two percent would get us down to zero. There's a highlighted line in the, in the green section, in, it's highlighted in yellow. When we first put together this presentation, we had proposed that Central Office would come up with cuts, amounting to a hundred and sixteen-five, to get our tax reduction down by one percent, and we felt we might be able to come up with a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to contribute, if we wanted to go beyond that, towards the two percent savings. So, what I've done here is, the components following that highlighted line are actually reducing the hundred and sixteen thousand and the hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar numbers that had been there on the original document. So, basically, what's in yellow is the amount yet to be found, okay? So, let me go through what, what savings we think we can achieve in this budget. The first component, for those in the audience, we've had three retirements this year that we're aware of, and the potential savings by replacing each of those teachers is approximately a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. We have had one groundskeeper position that has been unfilled for over a year, and we're recommending not filling that and eliminating that budget line from the, from the budget. When we originally did our, our budget for the Western Center in our budget, we anticipated an increase in expenditures for our, for us. The budget actually proposed by the Western Center was not as high as our projections, so we can reduce our budget for sixty thousand dollars for that. We're proposing a five percent reduction to our building budgets, which I'd ask you to hold on that, because if we have enough other savings elsewhere, I'd like to recommend to the board that we reinstitute those cuts, because that's stuff that impacts the students directly. And I'd much rather, if we can find the cuts administratively, do it there and leave the, leave the programs alone. Then down below the yellow item, we have a duplication of computer leases that was in the original budget. Essentially, Michael and his department budget incorporated the entire lease values for all of our leases. However, the special ed department budgets for their portion of the leases as well, so there really needed to be a reduction from, from the technology budget, so we're going to take seventeen thousand dollars out for that. As Mr. Wagman indicated, we have, going through, in going through the E-rate process, we got a proposal from a different carrier than Verizon, which was substantially lower, and, and we've tested out the, the carrier, and it appears to be viable for our needs, so we're going to give it a shot for the upcoming year, and we feel we will save ten, in excess of ten thousand dollars on cellphone bills over the next year. Mr. Rabinowitz, your favorite? If we, if we eliminate the production of the Achiever and reduce our contracted services with the, the organization that assists us in preparing that document, we feel we can eliminate twenty-seven thousand dollars from the budget. In addition to the high schools budget, there has been, for a number of years, probably, maybe since I've been here, I'm not sure, it might have come out early in my career, but there was a, a separate line item for safe and drug-free schools, specifically for the high school. There used to be a grant for safe and drug-free schools, now there's just requirements, mandates, but they're all, they were, when the grant existed, it was at the elementary level only. And at that point in time, the feeling was that there was more of a need at the high school for drug awareness. However, over time, this money has not been used in many years, at least not fully used. So, we're proposing, and this is something that the administration administers, so we're proposing elimination of that component. Mr., go ahead.
Can I just ask, is that's a grant?
It's, it's not a grant, it's, it's money that we've budgeted because there wasn't a grant. The board at that point in time felt it was important to, to fund it.
And will, would there be consequences from, from cutting this in terms of, of drug awareness or drug useness, usage in, in our high school?
As I said, the, the money has not been routinely spent, so I don't think it's been fully utilized.
Thank you.
As Mr. Cardwell indicated, we've gotten some, some better pricing on some utilities, and we feel that there is a potential for a twenty-five thousand dollar savings to be recognized in fuel oil purchases for the next year. We were able to lock in for the next year at a very attractive fixed rate. And some of the things that Michael had already discussed, some technology reductions, we were able to achieve some of our goals for next year within our current year budget, so we could eliminate some of those from the, from the two thousand sixteen, seventeen budget. So, and originally, I had the, all the yellow items in the column to get to the two percent tax increase. I think there's still valid topics for conversation, but at this point in time, we're showing a need to reduce our budget by another three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars to get to a zero percent tax increase, and, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. And the things we're still looking at in order to try and close that gap are listed in white underneath the, the orange section. We know of some increased revenues from the state, which we talked about earlier, and I am, at this point in time, proposing adding some more to that, a modest amount, maybe a one percent increase in that, which would be about eighty thousand dollars. Our...
Sorry, is that, so, does that mean that two hundred and eighty thousand dollars would, of, is, would potentially be coming from the state?
No. We had, we had proposed, or projected an increase in our original budget, so it's actually a little bit less than what our, our increases this year.
So, it, does the three hundred and thirty-nine thousand that we need to make up include the extra state money, or that, that we may be getting, or does it not?
We would use the extra state money we're getting, that we're proposing for next year to reduce that shortfall.
So, where does that leave us after we propose?
That's what I'm saying, we're going to, I think we can get close to the zero, but how, how close until we get more answers, I can't tell you. I feel comfortable that we can get under one. I am hopeful we can get to zero. Okay? Other positive areas, we've had, we've had improved collections on our property taxes this year, a higher collection rate. So, assuming that happens next year as well, there could be some additional property tax revenue. Even though we're not increasing property taxes, the collections are, are more timely. As, as Ms. Pacito said, the special ed department has been focusing heavily on bringing students back, and even though they've had a decrease in their budget already for out, out of place, out of district placements, we're looking very closely at that, and we think there's some more savings that can be garnered in, in the upcoming budget. However, I want to wait till the last possible minute for that, because yesterday, we had a really nice number, and today, it went down. So, we had a tuition that, the first invoice we got for it showed up today. So, that's a very volatile component of our budget, and that could, that could vary by a quarter million dollars, depending on if a family moves into the district with some really advanced needs students. And, and also, as, as Ms. Pacito said, there's potential some savings in contracting with a new OT service. So, with all those things, I can't quantify exact numbers right now, but we're, we're feeling very positive right now that we're going to be able to get pretty close to, to a zero this year. Things can obviously change between now and then. But, so that's, that's what I have to present for tonight. What I do want to tell you, just so you understand the, the process, from a budget adoption legality standpoint, we need to adopt a proposed final budget thirty days before we adopt a final budget. So, on our budget calendar that I issued previously, I plan on coming to you with a proposed final budget at our next meeting, and in seeking your adoption. That's not committing to anything other than meeting the, the letter of the law, and that would allow us the ability, if we desire, to adopt a final budget at our regularly-scheduled June meeting. If we're not quite ready to adopt at that point in time, we can schedule another meeting later in the month, but this would give us the flexibility to do a final budget at our meeting in June.
If, if we adopt the proposed budget, and then a week later, all of a sudden, you discover that, oh, you know, you can make an even greater savings, do we then have to start another month, or can we just?
No, it's, it's just a, the proposed final budget is to make the budget available for public inspection. It's still open negotiations until we say, that's the final, and we're done.
Yeah, and I've been following this for five years, pretty closely now, or at least four years, I'm sorry, and, and the proposed final always gets reduced, at least in my experience here, in terms of the projected tax increase. So, you know, it's a good starting point, or a midpoint, when we, in the past, when we had the preliminary budget passed, which we didn't do this year, but, you know, I mean, these numbers are certainly encouraging. So, you know, the only question I have is, do the one portion of this budget we, we haven't discussed, which is a big one, is, is personnel. We did speak about one component of it, which is shifting the position from one place to another, in, on behalf of special education, which I think is a well-justified shift, but, but I think it's possible we may need to have, depending on how these numbers go, we may need to have an exec session to discuss personnel related to the budget. And I wish Mark were here, if I could ask him if that's okay. So, I'll touch base with him on that tomorrow.
I had a quick question.
Can we just, can we just stick to that point, just for one second? I don't, if we're going to discuss certain personnel, Ms. Viole, if you can speak to your knowledge, that's one thing for exec session, but if we're going to talk about elimination or reduction in positions, I think that needs to be done at a public meeting.
I will speak with Mark Davis about that and get back to you.
All right. Last year, if I'm not mistaken, we had about a surplus of around nine hundred thousand. This year, how is our actual looking compared to our budgeted number?
I actually haven't spent the time to do that yet, I'll do that within the next couple of weeks, so I'll have some information for you. The one thing I want to point out to you is, with all the good news that came out of the budget passing and the fiscal code bill passing, one big glowing question mark out there relates to the plan con process. The fiscal code bill authorized the state to borrow two and a half billion dollars to fund... The fiscal code bill authorized the state to borrow $2.5 billion to fund projects that are currently awaiting funding in the PlanCon process. Potts Grove School District currently has $850,000 budgeted in the current year for revenues from that program. I think there's at least a reasonable expectation that it won't be possible for the state to organize itself, put together a bid proposal for a bond issue of that magnitude, go to market, settle, and distribute the funds this year. So, historically, PlanCon funds have been recognized in the year of receipt. So, if we don't receive it this year, that would be an $850,000 shortfall from that component. Now, we may get it next year. I don't know that, but that'll be another thing that I, as we monitor, I'm scheduled for attendance of a webinar on May 9th or 10th, I forget what day it is, regarding this program to see what the process is. The one encouraging thing is they're putting together a panel of legislators to study the program going forward. They're putting it into another year of moratorium, but they're putting together this panel to study how to move forward. And I had worked with Representative Seth Grove a couple of years ago on some legislation that, if passed, might allow us to receive some funding in Potts Grove for the construction of this building, which started during a moratorium, which could be very important to the financial stability of the area. So, I'll keep you informed on that as we go, but we're going to be working on updating the current year projections over the next couple of weeks.
Questions for Ms. Fiola, but the question is not to suggest that you would do things any differently. Where are we at with staffing, being, you know, deciding on staffing for next year being driven by numbers and not on emotion or false presumptions? We saw this happen, was it last year? I don't recall, and I just want to make sure that the decisions that are being made, which I think they're being made appropriately because I see a couple in the khaki color or whatever we're calling this here, but I want to make sure we're basing things based on student enrollment and this sort of thing, not on retirement, not on emotion, et cetera.
Well, we're still in conversation with Dr. Ziegler as we assign sections, as the, you know, and shore up the numbers and make sure the students are enrolled, so we're obviously taking a look at that. But, there wasn't a desire last year to reduce in an area where we had probably lack of enrollment, so that would be something that the board would need to decide was important.
Thank you. I just want to put that out there. You know, of course, we have a different board now and I know where I would be citing, so I'll be looking forward to seeing those numbers. My second question is, is it wise for us to schedule Mr. Rabbinowitz's now meeting to discuss what we have in front of us and what we heard tonight in more detail at a special meeting? I just want to make sure we don't put this off too long. Time-wise, Dave, you can speak to it. I want to make sure we give it the full diligence, because it's late now. I mean, we can talk now, but maybe another night.
Based on the numbers that are still in flux and Mr. Nestor's projection that we may be able to get to zero, my personal inclination, and I defer to the rest of the board on this, is to wait till we get to the, to the final preliminary, final proposed budget, which will be at our next meeting and see how that looks, and then, that still gives us more than 30 days. It gives us 45 days or so, right from there. The last day we can pass a budget is June 30th. So, I'm all for scheduling something or maybe marking a spot, you know, in case we need it, you know, to, and as I said, you know, there may be a need for us to have more discussions either in public or in exec session as appropriate, so I'll work with Shelley to see if we can mark the spot sometime after the next board meeting. Is that okay? With everybody?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
The one thing that we didn't speak about tonight with the budget I just wanted to bring to your attention, yesterday I sent you a second quote from, you know, pertaining to leadership planning analytics, and that has not been incorporated in the budget, but that obviously would be something that if you're still interested in pursuing or understanding further, that we would have to have those conversations, and I would need some direction from you at some point with regard to that.
What would the timeframe be for, for, if we decided we did want to do that to, you know, implementation?
Well, when I reviewed the proposal that the ECRA group presented to us, the contract begins July 1, and I'm assuming that they would want to work with the administration and the board during the summer. Now, if you recall in years past, we typically come up with our goals in June, and that's because the central office administration and the building administration are working on trying to, you know, flesh out those goals and put the strategies and actions on paper so that we have a game plan or a map, roadmap for the fall. Certainly, we could delay it slightly, but we would want to get started right there at July 1 or see if they would allow us to, you know, start some work prior to July 1, but it would be in this year's, it would be in the budget, so I would say July 1 or we'd have to ask them, could they do some of their professional development at the end of June with this year's, some funds from this year? And that would be how it would have to go.
Well, I'm the one who set you on the path to investigating this, although I think you were on your own path as well, and I was intrigued by the proposal, and I think we should make it a discussion item for the next meeting and...
Would you like them to come out and speak with us, or would you like us to talk with you?
I would love it if they came out to speak with us and for the public to hear. I mean, I don't like, I don't support unnecessary spending, but I don't actually think this is unnecessary, so, and I think it's quite reasonable in terms of price. So, for all those reasons, I'd like to investigate it further. I don't know whether I can get the support from the rest of the board, but I truly believe that objective analysis of our data can lead to much better decision making, and it's hard to be objective when you're looking at your own data and when you're not really expert in the field of analytics like these people are. So, I have a firm belief that it would potentially be a worthwhile investment and would like to at least discuss it further before we make any decisions.
I'll look forward to the discussion as well, because at this point, there's no way I would agree to spend $5,000, no less, $20,000 for somebody else to come in and create our goals for us with what we spend on administrators and staff and personnel. We've done it for, I don't know how many years this district's been a district, but we've done it ourselves, or the district has done it themselves for that many years, and if we can't come up with some standard goals, then we need to relook at ourselves. So, I guess we'll discuss it.
The goals are just a portion of what the service provides, and to be perfectly frank, I'm more interested in the analytics about our data and informing good decisions, and while, yes, we do our best to do that on our own and have for as long as I've been involved and probably forever, many, many organizations in the world recognize that this is a specialty that is worth investment, and I want to see if it's worth that investment for us, and Mr. Parker, if you disagree, and the majority of the board disagrees, then so be it.
The information you gave us, the company, if you go to their website, listed probably 20 different school districts in Pennsylvania, some very local to us. I don't know if there's any way to maybe contact them, some of those schools, prior to next meeting to get some feedback from them as far as, I mean, I realize every school's probably going to be looking for different information, but that might be helpful as well.
Yeah, I'm not sure that this particular company who, or group, which is endorsed by the AASA, the Superintendents Association nationally, is working so much on this piece in Pennsylvania, because I did ask him that, but he gave me some other references that I have to then follow up on that I haven't had an opportunity to do so yet. It was, I think it was DMC, you might, there were two organizations and one was quite costly, and this one was a lot more reasonable. Oh, okay. Well, when I was going back and forth with him in email, Jim, but I will ask him specifically, but he said for this work that we're looking for, I'm not sure that they're doing that in Pennsylvania. They're doing other things like national searches for superintendents. They do all kinds of different work, strategic planning, they do all kinds of different work, and in fact, you know, understanding that our strategic plan, we're going into our last year and next year, so you might want to think about, you know, who is going to help us facilitate the creation of our next strategic or comprehensive plan. Last time we had the Bucks County Intermediate Unit facilitate it. A lot of the other districts, they'll use Bucks County IU, but they'll also use companies like this that do analytics that can help us then put the goals in to make them measurable and also run the analytics on our data to ensure that we're looking at different independent variables and making sure that we're, you know, that we're able to get some data that's useful to us. So, but I'll get the references for you.
Anything else on the budget?
The last thing on the list, and I won't ask you to do anything with it tonight, but the business office has a continuous improvement plan like every other department does, and this year's project was to evaluate some budgetary award, presentation awards that are available from nationally recognized organizations. We've gone through the process to evaluate, from my perspective, I think we do about 75% of what's presented, maybe even a little bit more, but I think there's going to be some cost in doing more. So, bottom line was, in your last board update, I sent out some information and incorporated a link to OJ Roberts budget document, which was a successful recipient of the Meritorious Budget Award from the ASBO International. They're the only local district that I've been able to find that participates in either of these budgetary awards, presentation awards. I'd ask for you, if you could, look at the document I sent with it, and I have a couple, a number of prompts, a couple of questions for you to ponder, and if we could get some feedback perhaps at the next meeting on whether the board wants us to pursue this or, because there's some costs involved, there would be some costs involved, or whether there are components of this budget document that we would want to incorporate in our budget documents going forward without going through the process of applying for it. I think, actually, as I look through it, I think to some degree, our information is presented in a more clear and concise manner than what's presented in theirs, but that's me, and I understand it and I look at it, maybe it's different from someone who's not as close to the data. So, I want to hear your feedback on some of those things.
We added one last discussion item tonight. I'm going to make this very brief, but we're hoping to, you know, kind of get the nod to go forward, but Mr. Leach at the last meeting had asked about graduation ceremony and had motioned and then tabled the idea of going ahead and putting the distinguished honors, high academic honors and academic honors into the graduation ceremony. He suggested, you know, reading that as the students are entering, and then also, how can we honor them? I went back and several of us, administrator, administrative team, myself, Mr. Wagman, and Dr. Ziegler, met with the guidance counselors and Mr. Schuster, who puts on the graduation ceremony. We talked about, you know, what you were interested in doing. Initially, if you're aware, we didn't bring that forward. It was actually the guidance counselor's idea to establish distinguished honors, high academic honors and academic honors, but they were recommending we wait until 2018 when we had consistent scale, and the scales weren't, you know, married together in a way that's not exactly accurate, spot on accurate. But that being said, Mr. Leach asked us to go back and look at it. We can do it for this year's graduation ceremony and use the 97 or higher for distinguished honors, the high academic honors of 93 to 96.9, as I have on this draft in front of you of the AR, because essentially, oh, Mr. Rabbinowitz, it's on the back page of the document. I gave it, I'm sorry. And academic honors would be 90 to 92.9, but what I want you to understand is a couple of things. One, that the numbers are a little bit overinflated from what you might see several years from now, because we were obviously erring on the side of the student, so for this current class, we have about 84 students that would be in one of those categories, 27, 29, and 28. So, I just want you to be aware of that. We can do it. Might not be as many students later, and I don't want someone to say, well, how come we don't have as many honors students later? When I did speak with the staff, however, they were very opposed to reading all of that information for every student. They felt that the ceremony will lose its, you know, its, I don't know how to say, its luster, its formality, its very elegant the way it's done, it will be too long. They were concerned that, you know, we have a lot of elderly and people come and sit in the stands and they're really not interested in having a long drawn out. We do a beautiful ceremony, let me, if you have never been there, but it's nice and short and it's, it's really focused on kids and it's focused on all students. It's not focused on individual students, and their feeling is that this is, graduation is to recognize all students. We have a ceremony, a senior awards ceremony, where we recognize individuals and individual achievements. So, we were trying to figure out, well, how can we still recognize those individual achievements without making that the centerpiece of the ceremony, which is really for all students? So, what they came up with, you'll see on this draft on the back here, is that because we had the ceremony for senior awards first, we were thinking that we could give out a designation during those ceremonies, so you're recognizing those individuals. So, the salutatorian and the valedictorian, they already get medallions. Medallion is given for high academic honors in Potts Grove, so all of the students that are 90 and higher get the medallion, so they would receive that at the award ceremony and then they would be asked to wear it. We haven't worn them in the past to graduation. They've received them, but they've not worn them. So, any child that's academic honors or higher would receive this. I should start at the bottom and go back. And then, anyone that would be distinguished honors, I'm sorry, academic, high academic honors, the second tier up, would also get the silver rope. So, not only would they have their robe on, but we pick silver because the girls wear white and the gentlemen wear maroon, and this would stand out and show that they were high academic honors. And then, for the distinguished honors, those students would wear gold. And additionally, we felt that it would be nice from the stands above, because you're looking down, to have them also have a gold tassel, so it's one more thing that would demonstrate their high academic honors. All of this would be noted in the program. Yeah, it would be noted in the program, we just wouldn't read it because it will just take too long. But the salutatorian and valedictorian already have a special sash, the National Honor Society has a blue sash, so you have to imagine, we have blue sash, special spash, now we're going to have these different designations, and we felt that that way we can, we can recognize them, it's still elegant, it's still done very well, and individually, they will all be recognized at the senior awards presentation that we're having in the evening this year. So, if you can live with that, I think that the guidance department and Mr. Schuster feel like that would be... So if you can live with that, I think that the guidance department and Mr. Schuster feel like that would be doable and we can get the order placed immediately to get this going, which is why I added it to tonight.
Does the, when you say that it'll be noted in the program, would the students who qualify under these different designations be listed under those designations in the program?
No, we put, he was trying to figure that out. We were playing with it today or yesterday. But little asterisks and plus signs would be, is right, are right next to their name. They're already noted now of their academic honors because he showed me the class of 2015. And right now at the top, it says denotes honor graduates on each page. But what we would do is we'd put a key at the bottom. So you see all the kids' names and then somewhere in the program, we want to work with the person who lays out the program because we don't, we want this to look nice, but there would be a designation. So it might be three asterisks is the highest, then two, and then one, and then a plus sign for the National Honor Society.
So if I'm a parent of a graduating senior, then I can see in the program that my child got high academic honors if that was the case?
Correct.
Well, I think this is a great solution. Does anybody disagree?
I just have one quick question. Would be more appropriate, do they have a National Honor Society banquet that they could get these instead of the senior banquet?
This doesn't mean they all are National Honor Society. It's completely different. But the senior awards, all of the students that would be receiving these are, are there and we will recognize them at that time.
So you just need nods of the head from us?
I really do because, I mean, you tabled your motion. If you're okay with that, I'm just going to incorporate that into the AR that we already have that matches what we need for class rank, what you agreed to last time with your policy and that.
The only plain devil's advocate here, what about a, like an athletic scholar? Would we, you know, are we going to have to go and expand it that way too? Like if we're going to recognize all these kids, what about the band scholars? What about the athletic scholars?
Well, they can, they can, they can get their, well, this is, graduation's about academics, so it's not about, I'm not sure it's about athletics.
Opening up a can of worms there, just being careful, that's all.
I'm good with this. Anybody, anybody not good with this besides the concern that Mrs. Grimm has raised? My two favorite words, "meeting adjourned."